Good afternoon, welcome to the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, March 14th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Chair Renoud?
Present.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you would, please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance followed by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brother Kenny Morton from the Rock Creek Church Christ. Will you pray with me? Almighty God, our Father in heaven, we approach your throne at this time in a word of prayer. We just want to thank you for the beautiful day you've blessed us with. This is another opportunity for these chairman and the citizenry to come together and discuss and make decisions concerning our county government. We pray that as the discussion goes on, that everybody be respectful and they'll be given the opportunity to share their opinions and their thoughts. We pray that there won't be any prejudice or bias in decision-making process and that these commissioners will be guided by your wisdom and their understanding of the situations at hand. We thank you for all the blessings of life you give, continue to bless our county, our nation, our state, and just ask that your wisdom be imparted to each and every level that's affected by the decision-making process. We ask these things in Christ our Redeemer's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay, correspondence and business, Derek, anything? Public comment, anyone, Janet?
No.
Consent agenda? Today, on the consent agenda, we have to consider and approve the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for March 7th and consider the tax change orders in the amount of a positive $5,079.08.
Make motion.
Second.
Was that Rick Oglesby?
Yes, made the motion.
Rick, second.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renoud?
Yes. Okay, our first item of business, approval solicitation of mowing bids. Paul's not here, you get that?
Paul let me know he wouldn't make it. What's in front of you is pretty straightforward. We are looking to go in a different direction with our mowing contractor this year, and so we would like to seek bids for that service. And that's really, we're just seeking your permission to do that, and of course, we'll bring them back before you, once we have them.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the bid that they're asking for?
Derek, I just have one question. Is there a reason to go for bids again, or?
Yeah, our contract is ending anyway, and the company that we've had do it ended up subbing out most of the work there towards the end. We had a litany of issues with them, issues with their product, communications issues, and so it'd be a much better decision for us to go in a different direction.
The contract ended, ends in June anyways, so we would have to go out again anyways in June. So rather than wait till June and try to figure out what to do before June, we're just going to do it at the beginning of the season.
Okay, any other questions? Not then, except a motion to approve the solicitation of mowing bids for 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the solicitation of mowing bids for 2018.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renoud?
Yes. Okay, our next item is to discuss and finalize the community partners' funding.
Okay, so you guys all should have before you the summary that's been prepared, and you know, just the first page is just really an overview of, you know, all the partners that we have and kind of how they fit into our funding scheme. The second page, you can see what's been approved for each of the last seven budget years and then what the requests from the agencies were. In the bottom part of the page, it talks about what is currently coming from transient guest tax to supplement these requests, and you'll see that in 2017 and also in 2018, $16,005 for fair premium, $16,005 for fair building, and the Historical Society is getting $12,000 this year from transient guest tax. That is not in addition to what they're already getting, what is listed, so the Historical Society gets $71,000, and of that $71,000, $12,000 of it comes from transient guest tax. So that's kind of how that's broken down. So we heard from all of these and all these partners, and then we received back from each of you an individual worksheet of what you were recommending, and on page four at the bottom, it gives a breakdown of where each of you were. On the last page, I'm sorry, also on that page on the bottom, in the gray column gives you a median amount. That's a chart of what the most common answer was from you guys, and we did the best we could. On some of them, there wasn't a most common answer, so... And on the last page, we gave you the average of what each of you gave us. So we heard from you guys last year that you didn't particularly like the average, that we had done that the year before, and so last year, we asked you guys to discuss it and come up with a consensus and then vote on that overall, and I will leave that to you guys to decide how you'd like to do it this year.
My first question would be, Derek and Janet, your recommendations as far as concerning the tax lid and the tax income, where are we, in your perspective, looking at when we look at this donation gift?
Well, I mean, we're still under the same tax lid we were under last year, which should come in at about 1.5%. We have to stay under that lid. Community partners' funding, none of this would fall outside of that tax lid, so everything that we do has to stay under that one and a half. Now, we also try to give our entire, I mean, we have 238 employees, and we're trying to give all of them two and a half percent raises, and most of that wouldn't be out from under the tax lid either. That's to say nothing of money that Janet and I are trying to stick aside for our buildings, you know, our jail, our courthouse, and so we certainly have several competing considerations that I would caution you to really look hard at before we were, you know, we would up these amounts, because we're just, we're not in a position to do it right now.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, do you want to do them item by item, or do you just want to get some general thoughts overall first, or what's your pleasure?
Probably item by item. It's worked well in the past, item by item, I guess.
Okay. Okay, at the top of our chart then is Franklin County Historical Society. See, last year they were at 71,6, and...
Last year, that's what they requested, was 71,6. They actually received $71,000.
Right. And it looks like $71,000 appears to be...
$71,000 was the median. Four of you said $71,000, one said $72,000. I believe we did receive some feedback from at least one of you that said you'd be willing to do something from regarding their capital outlay request, which was $30,000.
So if we do the $71,000, and we did the same as last year, we would have another $12,000 that would come out of that $71,000 from TGT. So we're actually $59,000 of dollars that have come from that.
$59,000 would be tax dollars, and then $12,000 would be TGT. We had, one commissioner said that he'd be willing to do $15,000 from TGT from the HVAC, for the HVAC system, and... Yeah, I think just one.
Okay.
And we talked about this a couple weeks ago. I would prefer that we entirely separate TGT funds, like, and I don't want to commit an award today. I mean, if you all want to tell me, hey, at a later date, we're going to be comfortable giving another 12 or 15K, that's great, but today's award, I would like to focus just on ad valorem tax dollars, and so you would be in that $59,000 range, and the Historical Society, we would give them the understanding, hey, we're going to set a date to request TGT funds, please bring that request then, and we'd have that discussion at that time.
It was okay, I guess discussing the HVAC replacement too and helping out with that, but as an entirely different conversation.
And not all of our community partners, obviously, are eligible for that, but the Historical Society is certainly one that we can use those funds on, so.
Okay, so if we, if we look at the recommendations or the general thought, was $71,000, so basically $59,000, is everybody agreeable to doing that then? And looking, we'll do the TGT at a later date. Does that sound?
Seventy-one?
Yeah, the $59,000.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Rick?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, so let's leave that one's okay. At $71,000, understanding the $12,000 of that. Okay, Prairie Paws Animal Shelter?
Looks like four of you said $40,776. Only one went slightly lower at $40,250.
Did you have a reason, Rick?
Yeah, Rick, I was going to say.
Well, my only reason is I really want to see, and she's done a great job, but I really want to see her reach out to other communities more to make up some of that difference. Miami County being particularly one of them, so... And you just can't fund everything, and I guess I put my value on humans and human life and what we can do for people a little more than I do animals.
And I know that, you know, I feel the same way. When we get to the aging or some people like that, I'd rather see us, if we didn't have the funds, the animal shelter, and they have a way to, with their fees and stuff, to create fundraisers and so forth, they might have a greater opportunity to increase their funds, but...
They have a bigger, they have a bigger area to draw from if they needed to, I think. If they applied to Anderson County and to some of Douglas County and to Miami County, Baldwin and places like that, that's kind of my feeling. I'd love to, I'd love to fund them.
So about, about a $500 difference you're talking, which is just a little over 1%?
And I realize you can always reach out more, but I feel like she's done a whole lot since she's been out there. She's reached out to K-State and saved them a lot of money on stuff she's, K-State's doing with them. She's had numerous fundraisers. I realize that there's always more, but...
Well, one thing we do...
You think back to ones that's been here a couple, two or three years ago, where we were at and what she's done with it, I think that...
One thing we can...
Yeah, you're right there.
If we stayed at the same funding, not, no increase, and then we can also convey to her that we would like to see her really look down the road at tapping into other things as well.
And we should say that to all of our community partners.
Well, yeah, right, you need to understand that, you know, that we're at a, and we're doing our best, but you really need to be looking at whatever, so.
I guess that's a major concern of ours.
Sure.
So...
That'd be probably even, I totally agree with everything you said, and you said it well, but I guess just the effort they put in over the last couple of years and, you know, that was a sinking ship, and absolutely have righted it, and just because those efforts were so extraordinary, I guess for one more year, I'd at least be hoping to stay level just for that reason, because, I don't know.
So I'm hearing Rick, Colt, and Randy, at least three of you are fine at $40,776. Roy, what are your thoughts on that? That is flat from last year.
It was to stay the same because they absorbed the cost of the road they had to put in there, and I thought maybe they might be asking for more funds just because of that, but they didn't, so I think...
Okay, well...
You good, Derek?
And I'm fine with it.
Okay, we are good there, and just to clean this up a little bit, my intention after we get through these, is Janet or I will go down line by line, read the total amounts, and then just ask for a motion approving all of them.
And that's what we did last year, yep.
Great. Well, the next line item, COF, we all had the same one anyway. So it's like we're on the same page there, the $95,000?
Yeah.
Okay, Franklin County Conservation District. Obviously, we have some different thoughts there.
So three of you have $45,000, one has $25,000, and one has zero.
I had zero. You know, I don't know where to start. We, if we're going to, I guess, truly manage this ad valorem dollars, property tax dollars, want to make a real change as far as maintaining or lowering the mill levy, we have to spend these dollars like it's coming out of our checking account. And with that being said, the Conservation District, based on all the information they've presented and what we've seen, I couldn't write that check if it were my own money, so I won't write the check because it's everybody's money. You know, the services, I guess, at one point, I know there's a lot more grants, they're going to do more actual projects that were unique to that organization, and, but their state fundies dwindling, as I understand, there's far less federal grants. The services that remain are primarily education and outreach, which I think is largely redundant. There's, I can think, well, every school, you know, has a science department, you know, not even all the school districts in the county accept their free education and outreach, so I guess that's kind of a statement as far as how they value it, that service. You know, the Extension District also does similar education and outreach. Lake Region RCD, they do similar conservation, education, and outreach. I know their funding, their loan program is one of the more popular, actual things they do, tangible things, but as I understand from her comments, the USDA right across the hall offers the same thing. Once their funds are gone, they send them to USDA, so I guess that would be clearly a redundancy. You know, that leaves the seed sales and equipment rental, which there's plenty of private industry in the county that could fill that need, so I guess I wouldn't write that check if it were my own money, so I won't write it because it's, because it is, so...
Okay.
And I think, like Mr. Oglesby said, looking down, there's always other needs. This really isn't either-or situation. There aren't more dollars to go get, either the dollars come from somewhere else or they don't, they don't exist. We can't just raise taxes anymore, thankfully, and CASA's a glaring one that jumps out at me. Those are the most vulnerable people in the community, and there's a very real need to help humans, help people. And aside from that, like Derek said, we have 230 employees, 16 departments, huge capital needs, there's just, I guess we need to critically look at every item in front of us, much like we asked our department heads to do, and say, is this absolutely needed? And in my opinion, this particular item no longer falls on that side of the list.
I would, when I looked at it, I believe what she informed us was there were little to no grants or anything available from the state, and she was one who was involved in education and information and direction of people over to USDA to get that same service, maybe from the federal government side, and they needed the $25,000 at least to get matching funds from the state, is my understanding, and that's why I chose that fund, at least at that point, maybe they would be able to obtain matching funds for that position that may require them to rethink the position or how they do business, but still offer that service within Franklin County.
Okay, other comments? They do leverage that, apparently, that's what they, I know they leverage funds, and I think you're right, the $25,000 was the amount that they actually leverage.
Well, I'm, I'm on the other side, I totally disagree with pulling their funds from them. I'm not saying that down the road, I know one of the things that Mr. Waymire brought up was the Extension Service could take care of, some of what they do. I happened to ask one of the Extension Service people, just tried to check a little bit on this, and said, what could you guys take over some of the Conservation Department's stuff? They advised me that would be a huge mistake to do that. They said their programs are excellent, they're well-attended. My thing about it is, and I'm not saying down the road, maybe Colt is right to go that way, I just don't feel that it's right to do it this way. We haven't really went out and did any legwork. How many of us have been to their programs? How many of us have went and seen what they're doing? How many of us researched it and saw? I think we should at least go a year at what they asked for, what they've been getting, and then maybe do some looking into this and seeing if this is worthwhile down the road. But to me, to just pull it on them right now, and when we really don't know what their programs are or what they're accomplishing, to me, that's not right.
Well, they had the opportunity to explain, and they have, I mean, I don't know that it's...
And I agree with you, Mr. Howard, I guess my point is, is that you leverage that against the services that Elizabeth Layton Center may provide, where because of the shortage from the state and the bed space shortage in Osawatomie that we now have, they have personnel that have to sit at RMH with people 24 hours a day until they feel comfortable enough to allow them back out into the community. We also, when you look at the statistical information, that the number one or number two, depending on where you get your information, cause of death for our teenagers is now suicide, I'm reluctant that we would not look at trying to help them prevent those kind of disasters with our community. You can further look at incidents like Florida and other places that maybe if intervention for mental health could have stepped in, some of that could have been prevented, and I'm just, I'm, you know, we kind of held them in the same place last year, I don't know how long they can stay at that level and still provide the kind of services that our county and community need to keep us in a mentally healthy, safe state of mind, I guess.
One thing I might add, without offering an opinion at all, the easiest way we can increase, I've heard you bring up Elizabeth Layton, Colt, you mentioned CASA, and I know CASA requested an increase. I mean, the easiest place for Janet and I to find these funds are from this pot of money right here. I mean, I know we talked about looking at like other budgets, district court budget, and we've looked into that, and I certainly believe that's possible. Having said that, we know what we're working with here in terms of a full amount, and we know that, we know we can sit here today and reallocate that as you see fit. I mean, that, that can be done, and so I would just ask you to keep that in consideration as we work down through these.
I really don't want to punt, I guess, and wait yet another year to make a tough decision. That is what this process is for, and it is an either-or scenario for all these in front of us. Either the money goes to one or the other, there's no, I mean, I guess, even without understanding of your operational detail of the Conservation District, I generally understand what Conservation District does as opposed to CASA or Elizabeth Layton Center, and I can adequately weigh those values without, you know, every detail, so.
So you don't have to go with an amount that, you know, one of you has specifically said, if you guys, you know, can come up with some other amount, more or less, or whatever you want to do, this is up to you guys.
Roy, what are your thoughts?
Well, yeah, my thoughts, Conservation District is probably one of those agencies that's been cut by the federal government and the state government over time, and another agency that local people have to pick up the difference, and I don't know, I'm kind of with Waymire on his viability, and then I'm also with Mr. Howard too on not pulling the rug out from under him, so I think there's still a viable service that, you know, I think I could be comfortable maybe lowering my expect, or lowering my idea of a contribution to him.
And before I get to your thoughts, Randy, I'll just throw out there, Commissioner Oglesby did propose a medium between Commissioner Waymire and Commissioner Howard of $25,000, which we believe would allow them to get matching state funds if possible. So that's, as Janet said, anything's an option, but that's certainly out there. Randy, what are your thoughts?
Well, let me, what I understand, if we have the same pot of money, and we're looking at Elizabeth Layton Center wanting $8,000, elderly wanting basically $6,000, the Ag Society was 542, so if we're looking at the same pot, not worry about reducing that pot, but not increasing it, not that that's what we need to work with, but if we're, if we're looking at that, yeah, I can say, okay, instead of the 45, if you gave another number, and I'll just say 40, or whatever it might be, I definitely don't want to just throw, you know, just, we're not going to support them at all initially, but at the same time, if we're really going to look at, hey, the CASA is working with, again, children who need somebody to represent them, and we're looking at, I mean, elderly sometimes can't take care of themselves, so you got the little ones to the older ones, and then you've got the mentally people that need some help in that area. Yeah, I would say that's a higher priority, but I would be okay with something less than 45, but I would...
So if I could just interject there, Chair Renoud, if you guys look on the chart on page four, your, so your 18, well, not seeing your 18 request, so I was, I was just going to say that it looks like $5,000 above, but now I'm...
That's on page two.
Okay, 708, 674 is what they were granted in 2018, and your median amount from this year was 713, 674, so you're up roughly $5,000 in your median amount, so if you're going to stay flat, then you're going to have to find $5,000 from somewhere, and if you guys are discussing that this might potentially be one of those places, I'm not trying to interject anything for you guys, but I'm just saying that $5,000 is your magic number, if you will, if you're trying to stay where you are in 2018 off of your median amount. And that's not to say that we're going to stay at the median amount, you know, there's more discussion to come.
And the other thing that I would add, these partners were, I mean, they're placed in a random order, and these decisions aren't going to get any easier for you as you work your way through this list, and so, you know, it's easy... And so, you know, it's easy when someone's requested to stay flat to say, okay, we'll keep them flat, but I don't want us to get down to CASA at the end, and then all of a sudden, oh, well, man, they've asked for twenty thousand more dollars. I mean, it, you can't, I mean, I would encourage you to consider the position that Janet and I will be in if we up the total contributions twenty or thirty thousand. That's going to be very hard to find. And so I'm only saying this so that you really consider this as we work down through before we make a decision, because you've got a lot of great causes that are awaiting your opinion here, and it's just not going to get any easier.
Well, Colt, Colt made a, when he talks about keeping it in mill levy or even reducing mill levy, we shouldn't give the money just because the money is there now. If it doesn't, is not worthy of being supported, then we shouldn't be supporting it regardless of that. And so I don't want to come on in the idea that, yeah, that we had this seven hundred and some thousand, let's just stay at seven hundred. If, if it's not a merit, something that, you know what, we really need to put that money someplace else, well then let's do that. And, uh, I, I, I just don't want to just take a drop that, uh, somebody doesn't have an opportunity to really take a look at how it's going to impact. As Rick said, what all they do and whatever else, I'm not sure that, of how much that does impact the county. We are supposedly agriculture on rural and what they're doing, uh, can USDA, can Extension Office pick up some of that, is, is there a way to merge things? Maybe that's something we really need to take a look at. But I would be willing to, to reduce the amount of forty-five from my, just me personally.
To what?
I, I don't know what I want, I don't know, I said forty is what I said earlier, that's only five thousand, but that's a step, it's, um, it may not be a big enough step without, if, if we're looking at some of these others getting a, a bigger chunk, but at least that would not, thirty-five maybe is, is, but I...
Your own proposal, proposed budget hasn't increased over last year, so I guess you would have to cut more than that to even make your own, uh, jive.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I guess, I mean, it's enough for everyone up here to say that, oh, yeah, I, I value this service over the other, but essentially I don't want to piss them off and, uh, cut their funding. I mean, it's...
That, that isn't...
I may even give them calculators, but at some point, if, if other people get raises, somebody has to, it's either or.
Yeah, it's, it's not a matter of, uh, worrying about that part of it for me. It's a matter of what are the implications to the county with that service that's there? And obviously, uh, I, I think there's a value to that.
If we're waiting for anybody to walk in the door and say, I no longer value this service and want it deducted from my taxes, that'll never happen, it's never happened in the seven years I've been here. But everybody's sent us here with, I think, the mind of lowering or the very least maintaining the mill levy. I would like to, I mean, just because we spent this much last year, doesn't mean we have to spend it again. I wish people got as upset when we, when we, uh, you know, turned in another budget at, at or above where we were last year as they do when we, uh, look to make a cut.
Roy, what did you end up saying that you felt like?
Well, I, I think I could be comfortable with, um, thirty thousand.
So we've got forty-five, zero, forty, twenty-five, and thirty. I mean, we literally have no... And I, I will tell you, I'll help you all in any way that I can, but it's not on me to propose, uh, an amount here. I mean, you've got a, one of you's got to step up and make that decision.
I guess back to that moral picture, I, I, is, would you spend it if it were your money? Well, the same token to say, well, we need to at least give them thir, twenty-five thousand so they can get matching funds from the state. Well, that's tax dollars too. I, I guess it's not a cop out to say, uh, well, we need to give them at least twenty-five so they can go get more tax dollars from somewhere else. Um, it's either a service that's valued and you would spend, write that check if it were your name on the front of it or not, so, um, yeah.
Well, obviously, um...
Now, it, it's a service that I might like to have someday since I'm, you know, live in the country. So it's not a service I'd like to completely go away, so, I don't know, uh, if we didn't fund it, would it go away?
Which service would you like?
Conservation service.
Which service that they offer do you value, I guess?
The seeding and the, all that, um...
Do they offer a product or service that couldn't be found in the private sector? I mean, could you buy seed from co-op, the same seed, or?
Well, you probably could, I'd say.
Well, I have used them once, and I, I mean, I got three acres, and I, they came out to my place, looked at, told me what kind of grass to get, I ordered my grass through them, but they come back out, checked it the next year and told me what I should do to continue to make it grow better or whatever else. So, uh, I, I have to believe that there's people with a lot more acres than three acres that would probably use them. There may be other alternatives to getting that same type of, uh, service, I, I don't know, but...
Say I've used Extension Agency, I've brought in soil samples, they'll do ten a year for free, they'll tell you what you need to do to mend your soil to grow grass, I mean, again, that's a service you can go other places for.
Well, we can do an average, we can do, uh, we, I mean, obviously, if three people's going to vote, whatever we come up with, it's going to have to take just three votes to get there. And, uh, at thirty-five thousand, uh...
We're going to...
I think there might be two no votes, apparently. Uh, I, I don't know if you get three yes votes on thirty-five or not, or there'll be, you know, um...
So were you at forty, Commissioner?
Yeah.
I'd go to forty, that's all I'm going.
So the average, at forty-five, zero, forty, twenty-five, and thirty would be twenty-eight thousand. Rick has said that he would go down to forty.
Wasn't, uh, Roy, you were thirty-five, is that what you said?
He was at thirty.
Thirty. Thirty.
And I'm willing to do thirty too, I mean...
Thirty also?
Yeah, I mean, my, my point is, is somewhere along the line, there's got to be, there's got to be hard decisions made, and it may mean that our partners have to, especially in this particular case, they may have to modify their business model of how they do things or find funds from another source. Maybe they, maybe they charge more for their seed and their no drill till, I don't know, uh, to make up the difference. It's just, I think they have a valuable service, but it's hard for me to put that over the lives of real life people that need real life care.
Let, let me ask you something right quick. You talked about this, this pool of money and how much, you know, tougher, I agree with all that. What's the chance of the fair coming out of, uh, transient guest tax and not out of this pool?
I'm the what, I'm sorry?
The, the fair money?
Fair.
Coming out of the transient guest tax, that would be, I mean, it's bringing people in, it's...
Well, your transient guest tax fund is, is limited to how much we collect in there from the hotels, and we have to remember that we are paying tourism services out there, which we do employ Susan now as an employee of the county, and, you know, we have some other things that are, that are working out of there. So we have not yet seen what that budget looks like overall. We don't even really have a full year under our belt of having the tourism services being provided by the county. So, um, I guess I would caution you in taking any more. And you guys just mentioned fifty-nine thousand for out of levy tax funds for the Historical Society, and, um, if you choose to continue it, when we discuss it at a later time, twelve thousand dollars additional has been coming out of transient guest tax for them. So, um, as you look at that table that was on page two, we have fifteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars coming out of transient guest tax already for this budget year, in addition to the tourism services that are being provided, which include Susan's wages and any other additional things that, um, you guys want to do out of there. Um, some, just some things that Susan's thrown out, well, we're already under contract with Lee Stadler to do a marketing plan, and something that she recently brought to you guys was the butterfly murals to draw more, um, people into our community in various different ways.
That'd be a cheap, cheap way to get around making a decision and a spending increase.
To answer your question, Rick, it is legal, um, it is a legal use of those funds. Um, and just to briefly kind of agree with Janet, we just, given that this is our first year, we just don't know yet how much it's really going to cost us to run that service. And so, um, it is tough to go to that well, so to speak.
Well, here's, here's what I'm hearing, I hear that if it's, if it's thirty thousand, there's probably three people going to support that.
Who are those three?
Well, I'm assuming that Colt, Roy, and Rick will, because they all three said that are lower.
I said, I, I wouldn't spend it if it were my money.
I, I know, but I'm just, okay, if, if, if it's, well, if he's going to vote no because he wants a lower, then...
That statement I disagree with. I don't, you might not spend it if it's your money, there's two or three other things on here I wouldn't write a check for either, but it's things that we're going to have and we're going to need. I mean, but it's not the things that I feel it's the most important, but it doesn't matter which ones they are. I mean, there's some, I would write a check to that before I would a couple of these others, but I'm not going to bring that up, but anyway.
Well, that's what you're here for.
Well, no, it's not here for that, it's...
You're here to represent...
So...
If, if we, if we end up voting on them line on them by line on them, we, we'll get through this. If we're going to do it as a group and then come back with all of them at one time, it's going to be a...
We're going to hold this one out and vote on it as soon as you make a decision, and then we'll remove it. So if you guys can't agree, I will ask for a motion, but I, I would like to talk through it a little bit more prior to, uh, because I don't think we've got an agreement yet. I hear Roy saying he could do thirty, I hear Commissioner Oglesby saying he could do thirty, Colt's still at zero, Howard's at forty, and I don't know where your bottom line is.
Would, would you guys be more comfortable, I mean, we've already talked a lot about this, and I hate to stray off of it when we have a conversation going, but would it make sense to you guys to go through some of these other ones, then you can kind of see where you're at and come back to this one?
That's fine with me, and then may, if that helps anybody...
I mean, maybe then if you determine that some of these other ones have, you know, a higher value than what you thought, then it might sway your decision, or a lower value than what you thought, it could sway your decision.
In answer to your question, I'm probably forty. Uh, I mean, I'm not saying that I would say no to thirty-seven, five or thirty-five, I mean, whatever I can get, I want to get, but I, I'm not going to just, you know, walk, walk, say, I'm not going to vote yes for it, but, um, I really have trouble, I, if anything else, from forty-five thousand to thirty, that's a third of, fifteen thousand, that's a third of their budget, a third of what we've allocated before. To do that with, um, nothing has changed that I know of, eh, eh, what they operate on, what they've done, what the benefit was over the last whatever years. So for, for us to make the decision, we're going to just go from there to here, um, other than the fact the tax lid, and the tax lid is, is that, maybe we haven't looked at it lo, long enough to really just say, you know what, we shouldn't be spending our money there. And maybe that, maybe that is the answer, but I don't want to sit here and just, oh, yeah, I'm going to do that right now and say, that's where we're at.
That's what budget times four. I guess if anybody was going to change my mind, propose an amount and tell me what service you pay, what, what service do you want to pay thirty-five thousand dollars for? I mean, some, for equipment rental that you could rent somewhere else, for grass seed sales I can go to co-op for, for, uh, showing me how to grow my grass, which Extension Agency does for free. Uh, I mean, where's the value? I absolutely would, if I had, uh, twenty million dollars or, or approximate budget and, uh, to keep our community a great place to live, gives, give Elizabeth Layton Center a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to help those vulnerable people who, it's a great investment to keep them out of jail, keep them productive, I mean, yeah, I would spend that money if it were, was our... I mean, just to pick one randomly, so I, I stand behind that statement. If you want to change my mind, please propose an amount, tell me which service they provide you want to pay that amount, amount of all of our money for.
Well, you're, you're talking about growing, buying some seed from them. I, like I said, I think there's more to it than that. I think your water and soil conservation in your county is important, and they're a part of that, and they work with the ones to do that, with their forestry and so forth on different projects. I just think, uh...
Like RC and D?
I don't know how much they work with RC and D. I mean, I, I'm not going to sit and argue with you, because you're going to attack everything I say on it anyway, it's apparent, because you don't want to do it. But, I mean, that's where I'm standing, forty. I think it needs to be looked at more, what's going on and what they're doing than just, it's like no.
Well, where do you find, just a question, Rick, where do you find the additional funds? I mean, if you, if you stay at...
How much additional funds you saying we're, we're having to find here?
Well, as I previously stated, if you look at the median amount, which is on page four, it's seven hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-four, and you look back to page two, to the twenty eighteen funding level, which is seven hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars, the median amount, which is the most common answer from you guys, when we put your numbers into the chart, it's a difference of five thousand dollars that we would have to come up with to stay level.
So you're talking, you're looking at, uh, page two on the, uh...
Page two for the twenty eighteen funding level, which is in the...
Not the, not the nineteen request?
No, not the nineteen request, because that's the full amount that each, each agency asked for. But seven hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars is what they were getting in eighteen.
Right.
And then if you flip to page four and look at the median amount, which is the most common answer from you five, you're at seven thirteen, six seventy-four, which is a five thousand dollars difference.
And that doesn't really include, as I know you probably all got the same email that I did from CASA, that they already got a cutting from another agency that helps fund them, and there's just no way to make up those, the difference in funds for them. I mean, they have nowhere to find that money.
So where's the main raise coming out on that? I'm trying to look at the median back then, it's mainly, the only place we're really up is CASA, right?
CASA was up fi, up a thousand dollars, um, um, four thousand dollars to services for the elderly.
There's five thousand.
Yep, that's the five thousand dollars, yep.
Well, and something to keep in mind, um, tax lid is one and a half percent. One percent of seven hundred thousand dollars is seven thousand bucks. So in theory, we could go up that amount and still be under the one and a half percent tax lid. Again, I, it, it's not ideal, and I'm asking my department heads and electeds to stay flat. I'm not trying to give them that one and a half percent luxury, because we've got our employees we're trying to take care of, but the math would work today. But that is without consideration of the info we got from CASA, because several of you elected to give them five thousand bucks or four thousand bucks. And if you're going to stand by that, then it works, but, um, but that's, we still have to discuss that yet, so...
Increasing funding, but staying under the tax lid would still be a tax increase though. It's just under the maximum amount of tax increase that we're allowed.
Yes, yes. And again, if we are going to prioritize our pay plan and our capital needs, we really need all of that room that we can get. You know, it was hard for Janet and Joy and I last year to find it, and it'll be harder this year. Be harder every year we do it as we find efficiencies, frankly, so...
Why don't we go through the rest of them and see where we're at? Can't hurt anything.
I, I kind of would like to go ahead and move on too, and then see what we have, because the, the others will impact obviously where we're at, so let's just, okay, everybody, David, just move on and see where we go. FCDC was...
FCDC was again, flat. And it looks like that's what everybody was at. The, um, Ag Society, the County Fair.
But Commissioner Renaud, let's slow down. Like, are we all in agreement on FCDC staying flat? Like, is that where? And I'm not calling attention to FCDC. I just wanna make sure we have time to discuss, should any of you wanna discuss, rather than flying through it. So are you all okay with staying flat? Um, and I'll tell you, he's in the room and given everything on his plate. I, I commend the work that he's done to stay flat because I, I know in a perfect world, you would've asked for a lot more, but, um...
But what did you say the other day, James, that you had in, that you're rejecting the use for marketing that you have right now? That you projected by twenty-twenty or something, that would be gone or something?
Right, by, by twenty-twenty, when the first four years of the proximity park marketing plan are complete, we'll exhaust our reserves. And at that point, if funding stays flat, you know, it, we won't be able to take care of it. So, uh, you know, it may be something that the, the city and the county might have to jointly fund past that point or, uh, you know, increase the funding a lot more, uh, at that point, uh, to be able to cover at the same level that we've been doing. We spent approximately sixty, sixty-five grand a year right now, uh, on proximity park. And to be completely honest with you, that's a pretty shoestring budget for what we should be doing to try and attract the type of industry that we're trying to attract.
Yeah, I don't think there's a question about the need of FCDC. Uh, I think, I think it's a good point that you make is, yeah, just because it's, they've made an effort to keep it there, and that's great. That helps us. Okay, the Franklin County Fair, Ag Society. See, they asked for an increase of five hundred and forty-two dollars, three percent. Looks like everybody was like, go okay with staying at that, except for myself.
And I would be okay with coming some off of that. I feel that there's a lot more out there that they can do to raise money that's not being done. I think there got some new people in there that's got some good ideas and will make better movements than what's been in the past. But I think if we're looking to, to cut some and save some places, I think that's a place I could go, some off of there.
Go a dollar up?
Well, we're looking, what, seventeen to ten?
So remember of that seventeen to ten, thirty-two, ten is coming from transient guest tax. So you have fourteen thousand dollars coming from levy taxes on that. So I'm...
How about you say from transient guest tax?
Three thousand, two hundred and ten is coming from transient guest tax this year for that.
Rick, that's fourteen thousand adblocker tax.
That's fourteen thousand.
Would you drop a ten?
Yep.
You would, you would be willing to go down to ten thousand? Okay, so Rick's suggesting lowering it four thousand dollars.
Roy, Rick?
Well, actually, I'd be willing to go down some too.
You wanna go down some?
Yeah, before asking everybody else to tighten their belt. I send too.
I know they are looking at, like, bringing in some other events for the fairgrounds that they can make proceeds during the year. I don't know.
I'm fine with that too.
Ten? Coming down, Colt?
So I have heard ten from Rick Howard, Rick Oglesby, Roy, ten from you, Commissioner Waymire. Would you be...
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So everyone's at ten then? Ten from levy taxes.
Yes, instead of fourteen. Okay, Elizabeth Layton Center, they've asked for five percent, eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Looks like Commissioner Oglesby and myself are the two that asked for, agreed to do a little bit more.
Well, I think it's unfortunate, but they're being asked to do a lot more with a lot less because the state's not really funding at the level there that they probably should be. And I think the need, the need's not going away.
What's one? I'm sorry. I, I agree with you there. What'd you say the one percent was, um...
Well, just basic math, would have it at seven thousand.
Move it over to...
So it's about ten thousand bucks, I would say, is one and a half percent of seven hundred, if my math is correct. I think it's...
Which would be entirely property tax increase, right?
And I'd be fine, even if we went to, if we went back down to what you were at, Randall, and Mr. Chairman, at a hundred seventy-five, I think that might be, maybe that's more doable, but...
That would be more like a, what, percent? Two percent?
I think we should stay where we were last year, flat on it. I mean, I realize the state's getting tougher, but we can't pick up all the slack for the state. And that's a pretty good chunk. And it's not like it's us alone. I mean, they're drawing from Miami County, they're drawing from the city. There's other money that they have coming too.
I totally agree with both of you. Uh, Mr. Oglesby spoke very well to the need and how, how crucial that service is. But, uh, my reservation is just what you're saying, that the state's running away from it faster than, than we can keep up with. There's no way with our resources, we can, we can meet the shortfall the state creates. So I guess at some point, they're, like I say, they're gonna run away faster than we can keep up. And I guess it's just not...
And pretty much what you're saying, if we try to keep up with, like, that, some of our other departments or our other things are gonna suffer for it. And that's kind of where we're getting into right now. I mean, if we give more to Layton Center, which is, I agree, needs more. The service for the elderly needs more. Several places here need more. But if we try to do that, we're gonna see some of these other things that we can't give to, to keep up with doing that.
The thing about Elizabeth Layton Center, those services may save us money on the backside by not having sheriffs, people in and deputies and jail people and things like that, that cost us. We're gonna be paying for those on that end if we don't pay for it on this end. So it's like Colt said, you can see both sides of that one. It's really, it's really tough. We can't make up the state shortfall. But on the other hand, it might be advantageous dollar-wise to spend it here instead of on the other side of, of wherever else those services might go if they don't get handled there. I don't know that answer.
And I think their ability to teach the class on mental first aid and, and do, educate the public on recognizing certain events in people's lives has, certainly has the potential to save lives, whether it's that individual or maybe lives that, I don't know, that you could ever put a value on. I mean, it, and I, those are the kinds of things that are probably gonna get cut if, if they don't see the funding that, you know, that they need to operate on. And that's, and that's unfortunate. And I know that there are other areas that they, they do get funded from. I already know that another agency has already cut their funding as well, so...
This would be a cut if we stayed level. It would be, and I, I agree, uh, it would be a shame if they couldn't continue operations as normal. And, um, they have been cut hundreds of thousands of dollars already, but not by us. Uh, we've maintained our commitment to them. The cut they've received from the state's been through can care and then direct, uh, lead through the state budget contributions for mental health. Horrible decisions, probably bad investment long-term, no doubt about that, but not, not because of us. That's not a bad decision we made. Uh, we've maintained our commitment to mental health.
So I have Commissioner Howard and Commissioner Waymire as staying flat at one seventy-two, three, one, three. And I have Commissioner Renaud and Commissioner Oglesby an increase to one seventy-five, which is a one and a half pers, roughly a one and a half percent increase, which is the amount that we can come up on the tax lid, assuming you want to do that. Roy, where are you at on this?
I was a level.
Okay.
Yeah, the twenty-seven hundred dollar difference approximately. And like you said, that's one and a half percent raise. Back almost just a share, maybe under that, I mean, more than that, one and a half percent.
I could do a very small increase if we make serious cuts somewhere else because I think it is a valuable service. Inflation alone is gonna drive up their costs, but, uh...
Say you've realized four thousand of quote-unquote savings off of the Agriculture Society. Just wanna keep track of that as we go. So if you gave, you know, two and a half of that roughly back to give one seventy-five, you'd have one and a half that...
And I, and I could go one seventy-five, but...
I was thinking maybe that four thousand was gonna go back up. The one we're going back to in a little while, we'll be talking about. How many times can we spend that same four thousand?
One seventy-five, does, can you all agree on that?
I could do one, I gotta agree with that.
One seventy-five, because that were...
All right, thank you, guys. Services for the elderly. They asked for a three percent increase, which is almost six thousand dollars, thirty-nine hundred. Twenty-nine, one ninety-nine, two oh-three, two oh-four, two oh-three, five.
My, my opinion, the two most important things really that we, to our county on this is probably the two things we're talking right now. CASA's gonna be important too. But I mean, uh, we gotta take care of our elderly and, uh, the Layton Center. We know what, you know, not having, mental health taking care of what happens, we pay for it on the other side, no doubt. But I don't know. I would think on this, uh, Mr. Waymire, did you stay flat?
Yeah, I'd like to stay flat.
Commissioner Dunn did too, and I went up somewhat. I'd be willing to go back to flat.
If, uh, if they got the one and a half percent, that would be about three thousand dollars. They were at one ninety-nine, or what it was, well, yeah, twenty-eighteen. So one and a half percent's almost three thousand. That would be two oh-two. And I got three people then at one ninety-nine.
I think the money's there. I'd like to stay flat.
Were they trying to, were they looking at a, a vehicle or something? Do you recall if they were?
She said they did just get a new vehicle.
Yeah.
But they're looking at potential, I think, another one that would do their transports outside because that's non-funded by DOT money.
They said the latest one was non-funded. Said that as they go forward, they wanna buy smaller vehicles with better economy.
Yeah.
This is not, I mean, this is, it's, it's services for the elderly, but it's also part of our transportation that takes care of those who are unable to drive or to get anywhere else within our, our county, whether that's to the grocery store, to the doctor. So it's, it's not that it's just meals on wheels. I mean, so that's one of the things I thought about when I looked at it. And I think we were, I believe we were fairly flat last year.
Right here again, they, they could certainly use everything we can give them.
They went from one ninety-eight, one, to one ninety-eight, one, to one ninety-eight, basically, one. Then they went to one ninety-nine last year. So like, over the last four years, it's gone up just a little over, not quite a full thousand dollars. Well, like I said, one and a half percent is three thousand dollars.
I could go up to two oh-two.
Two oh-two?
Leave me some room for the bottom.
So you were at one ninety-nine, now you're at two oh-two?
Yeah.
So...
I would do the two oh, I would do the two oh-two. That's the one and a half percent.
I'm sorry, Roy?
We had three votes at one ninety-nine.
Yeah. Yeah, previously, yeah, we had three that were one ninety-nine. And now we're at, two of you are at two oh-two, one at one ninety-nine.
I'm at one ninety-nine. I think the point, when we wanted to go down the list earlier, was to maybe find some savings there. So we didn't have the conversation up at the top, so that we're spending more money down below. You had three votes at level, I would hope we'd stay level.
Roy, you okay with the one ninety-nine that you had initially then?
I'll have to rethink it. I, I, I think they need a little more. Two, two thousand, or two hundred thousand.
An even two hundred?
I believe you said two oh-two, is that what you said, Roy?
Well, I changed my mind again.
You have the right to do that.
Commissioner Dunn, where are you at now?
I was, I was thinking two thousand more, which would be...
Two oh-one, okay. So we have one ninety-nine, one ninety-nine, two oh-one. Where are you at, Commissioner Oglesby?
I'd probably go the two oh-one.
Two oh-one? Okay, so...
That's less than one and a half percent. I, 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 I mean, I, I, every dollar they get, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm for. So if it's two oh-one, if that'll work, I don't know, but...
So we have two oh-one from three of you? Is that what we're...
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, we're all gonna be at different points on all of this, where it's at, but... I don't think either anybody's against the use, and they're saying that they're not spending it wisely or anything like that. That's not the...
I understand that.
Do you wanna make a motion since there is some disagreement on this, just to approve this amount?
To approve what amount?
The two oh-one.
I'd rather get a consensus.
Not to throw a wrench in this. It's painful already. If we approve that, will that, and we come back and find out we can't make it fit within these dollars, does that make this one that's hard to adjust basically?
I'd rather get a, try to get a consensus.
That like, if, if we set this one in stone, then we get to the bottom and the numbers still don't make sense, now do we have one less variable to adjust?
Yeah, probably. Okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure...
Let's just lie, let's leave it at the two oh-one with Janet. Like you said, when we told them at the end, Colt, where we're at, and see what we're, what we're doing there. So that leaves us...
Hey, CASA.
Yes.
CASA's asked for twenty-five thousand. There really was no clear median amount. We did have two of you say five thousand, but one said four thousand, and then we had a ten thousand. And if cuts were made other places, one of you would be willing to go to twenty thousand.
Did we get anything on what the court pays? I got the copied thing, but I didn't see an amount that the court paid.
I emailed you guys everything that she got. She does not get any money from District Court, and she told us that during the meeting, that she does not receive specific money from District Court. She receives office supplies from them. They buy her office supplies.
I saw that...
Yes, they buy them and give them to her.
United Way in Anderson County's not giving them anything this year? There was, wasn't there something we were giving, a certain amount from United Way here, but they weren't gonna get anything from Anderson County this year from United Way, CASA.
I think so.
See, they're not leveraging their funds. Financial assets liabilities. Revenue, United Way, they've requested twelve thousand from United Way.
So they're not getting that.
So she gets, so from District Court, she gets three cases of paper and two rolls of stamps a year. So in our, in our dollars of paper, we pay thirty dollars for a box of paper. So, um, that's ninety dollars for that. And two rolls of stamps are forty-nine dollars, so a hun, roughly a hundred dollars for stamps. So she gets roughly two hundred dollars in supplies from District Court every year.
And what have we already given them? An office? We supply them an office, right? They have no, we take care of the utilities and everything in the office, so...
Well, last year was the first year we, um, gave them anything besides in kind, the office space.
I originally, I mean, just get started, I put five thousand down. That, what's it, thousand dollars up from a year ago? I'm comfortable with that.
I had five, but I would go up to ten.
Well, from requesting nothing to requesting...
The rate, fifteen thousand were the requests... The rate, fifteen thousand were the requests for another position.
For twenty-five thousand and.
If I'm right, remember right, is, is that, that next person they were going to hire was that?
Down to fifteen for that reason.
But I think the ten puts them pretty much break even with what they lost from United Way. And they're shredding water as it is.
And how much did Anderson County cut, Janet?
Um, she says. They're only getting ninety-five hundred from United Way and Franklin County, and they were awarded no funding in, from Anderson County, so that looks like she had sixty-nine, sixty from Anderson County.
So they're down almost seven grand.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, up here, I think that what she's saying there is, um, United Way and Anderson County didn't give them any money, and United Way and Anderson County was one thou, one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, so that's what they're not getting, it's one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
It's crucial they have enough.
Is that, is that how you understand it?
That's not correct. They, they, they were cut from Anderson, they were also cut from Franklin.
That's not what that said.
Okay, her email says that they are awarded ninety-five hundred from United Way and Franklin County, and nothing from Anderson County. So, okay, so her United Way overall total is twelve thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so she's down roughly three thousand dollars.
That's correct. Now we're on the same page.
Sorry, trying to read her email and what her chart says here, and she's got Anderson County.
And that's why I said a ten thousand is just about break even to where they were.
I think this is, I don't know, we, no, it's not something we really discussed before. Last two years. A comment that she made that in, what, three years or two years, this kid had been replaced sixty-six times? Rule of thumb is a child's setback developmentally one year, every time they're placed. This child's been replaced sixty-six times. Everything on this list is important to somebody, but, man, i- if, you have that kind of start in life. You're probably going to need services from everybody on this list.
According to her email, eight thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy cents will be what goes to pay for the, a person's salary. Because she's estimating seventy-eight hundred dollars for the salary portion, and then five hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy cents for the taxes that they would have to pay to employ that person.
That's the second person.
That's the, that's the additional person that, that it's going to take to get them more volunteers, because they're, they're volunteer max.
Even at ten thousand, that's going to be able to just keep them, keep the doors open with what they're doing right now.
Yep.
And what did she tell us, did she say sixteen closed cases, all of which were in Franklin County?
Fourteen, fourteen.
Fourteen, and they were all in our county, correct?
Of the twenty-eight cases that they had, fourteen of them were closed, and all fourteen of them were in our county. What they consider successful results.
I guess initially, when you hear other counties cut them, it would be easy to say, well, we can't pick up their slack, but it does appear we're getting the fruits of their efforts entirely, so. I, I guess, that argument may be a little bit.
Is, is Casa around because of a state statute, or is this just, uh? I mean, I can't really see where they, I see they have the, the board of directors, I understand that, it's. And it tells what their mission is. What, what got them started here, basically? It said they were just founded in two thousand and two as a voice for, you know, the Glacier Children. The what?
Their civic organization, they're not by statute, that's correct.
Yeah, I, I'm unaware of any statute that establishes them, they establish themselves because children need care and representation in the court system. You have kids who are coming from broken homes.
I'm surprised the school districts don't support them in some way, but maybe they're like everybody else, the money is. Okay, um. I would, I don't know, I'm kind of, I, I agree with you, how important it is. My problem I'm having a little bit is, as we went down, like you said, through the things to look at, maybe freeing up money, we started spending more money. And I'm not totally willing to give up on the one we're going to go back to, and that's a little bit of a problem I have with, uh, the amounts given down here for me, and I had went up a thousand to five thousand. I don't know where we're going to end up on numbers once over, I, I mean, I could go up a little more than that, but.
We're a thousand dollars up, based on their current requests. Given the four, we cut four thousand from the Ag Society, we increased DLC three thousand, then we increased Services for the Elderly, two thousand. So we've increased five, reduced four, we're up one thousand with two to go, and that's based on what they've requested.
So if we gave them what they requested, we would be up a thousand?
Yeah, if you gave the last two what they requested.
I'd be willing to go to fifteen then. I'd be up ten for me.
Well, actually, I, I could go up to ten also, but, a little concerned we're creating another agency that we're supporting. That we didn't support before, because they're mainly volunteers that took care of this need and, and. And they're, they wanted to put on another full or part-time person and. I don't know what the reasoning was for Anderson County from dropping them all together.
Well, just a note on that, Roy, on her spreadsheet, she has that they get six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars from Anderson County directly right now. Rick Oglesby was talking about that they got their United Way funding from Anderson County cut, and that was one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So Anderson County itself has not yet cut them, but the United Way in Anderson County did. Potentially because, they have less funds to give that they, than they've had in the past.
You say if we were to give them twenty-five, we would be up one thousand?
I'm just talking about what these agencies have requested, I'm not looking comparing to last year, I'm just looking at their requests and saying, as of now, in totality, we're giving them one thousand dollars more than they requested. Now, where that puts us, I'm not adding them all up as we go in terms of full amount.
So I just added them up, in theory, between the Conservation District and Casa, if you want to stay level, you have forty-eight thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars to give to those two organizations.
To stay perfectly.
To stay perfectly flat.
And to stay, so to stay within the one and a half percent, just to give them that option, forty-eight thousand plus seventy-five hundred is about fifty-five-five. To stay within what we assume will be the tax lid again. The forty-eight to stay flat, fifty-five-five to stay within the lid, though that would be a pure ad valorem increase.
Forty, forty-eight hundred or forty-eight thousand?
Forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight thousand between the two of them.
Between Casa and.
Because the Conservation District has requested forty-five, Casa's requested twenty-five. And to stay flat, you're potentially going to divvy up forty-eight thousand between seventy thousand dollars of requests.
And fifty-five thousand if you go up.
Yep.
We did thirty on the Conservation District, then how, what can we give to Casa then?
Well, if you wanted to go up that one and a half percent, you'd be looking at twenty-five to give Casa. If you wanted to get back under the tax lid, what did we say, forty-eight, so, down seven thousand, so you could give them eighteen.
About that, I think I'm going to stay at, at ten for Casa.
Okay, Roy's at ten, at last I heard Rick was at fifteen. Holt's at twenty.
Twelve-five.
Commissioner Oglesby?
I could go fifteen.
If we go fifteen, I think I, I have to look at the one and a half percent, not staying flat.
The tax increase, property tax increase.
If you went to fifteen on that one, what would that leave?
Thirty-three.
I might.
To stay ther, flat, thirty-three, but if you were going to go with the one and a half on all of this, the one and a half percent, then you would go to, yes.
To get back to. Get to forty for the Conservation.
I tell you what, I, I could, I could go to thirty-seven-five on Conservation. I don't want to, but I could do that. I hate to push the one and a half percent, that's, I'd almost rather stay at one percent and see where we were at and whatever else, that's, that's just me, that's just, just myself.
I would never, I'm not, not from that, I wouldn't raise taxes for, I'm not in favor of raising property taxes for this.
That's why I wish we'd have stayed flat on the, uh, Services for the Elderly and made up that three thousand down here. I think that way we wouldn't, we were keeping them flat, and that wasn't taking anything away from them. I think we could have saved three thousand right there off of that and put that into this.
What did we end up on the elderly, two oh-two?
Two oh-one.
Two oh-one.
Which was up two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's just two thousand.
We have two fifteens on Casa, and that is, uh, Rick Howard and Rick Oglesby, are any of the other three willing to go to fifteen on Casa? And get that out of there?
I, I'd still want to stay at the two oh-one on the elderly.
Holt, you're willing to save fifteen on Casa?
Yep.
So we have three of you that are willing to do fifteen on Casa, and so that leaves thirty-three thousand to stay flat for Conservation, is that correct, Janet?
At least so, I'll add it up one more time to make sure.
I don't know that a thousand's going to make a lot of difference, uh, in Conservation, but it might make a big difference in the elderly. But.
Pressure.
What if we went to?
I mean, for Janet adding all that.
Well, I want to make sure it's right. So thirty-three, three thirteen is what we have left, um, to stay flat, if we go the, we stay level at the levy taxes amount for the Historical Society, which was fifty-nine thousand, because you were giving twelve thousand out of transient guest tax. Forty thousand, seven seventy-six out of Prairie Paws, uh, for Prairie Paws, ninety-five thousand to COF, and those both were leveled. Um, FCDC level at sixty-four, three seventy-five, Ag Society down four thousand dollars at ten thousand dollars in levied taxes, because you had done an additional thirty-two-ten from transient guest tax, which it will be up for debate later. Elizabeth Layton Center was up slightly from one seventy-two, three thirteen to one seventy-five. Services for the Elderly was up from one ninety-nine to two oh-one, so that's an increase of two thousand dollars. And Casa was up from four thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars.
So in the Layton Center, you went to one seventy-five?
That's what the.
That's about what the one and a half percent came out, wasn't it?
At least three of you were at that.
I thought we were just one seventy-two, three thirteen. Well, just my opinion, I'd like to see us, if we're going to go fifteen on Casa, and I have no problem with that. I would like to see us go flat on the Services to the Elderly and the Layton Center, and what's left there, go back, and I'll agree with them, whatever on the Conservation District that we have left to give there. You want to go one ninety-nine on the, uh, elderly, and what was the other one, Rick?
One ninety-nine on the elderly and.
One seventeen.
Seventy-two, the three thirteen, which stays flat on both those, we're not cutting them any, they're getting the same. And what's left over there, could go back, in my opinion, to the Conservation and whatever's left there, I'll agree with.
That's going to put you, what, between thirty-eight and thirty-nine thousand for the Conservation District?
I'll go with that, I think we, if we do that, we work as much as we can to try to be as fair as we can. And the only two, well, the only two that really took a cut would be the Fair Board and, uh.
So that'd be thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand to the Conservation District, if you kept Services for the Elderly and Elizabeth Layton Center flat.
That's what I'd like to do. And that, that's, that's get damn flat, no one and a half.
That's staying flat.
For the whole, everybody.
Oh, the one I disagree with, uh, Services for the Elderly, I think, um. I think two thousand dollars, um. They certainly need it.
I'm not in favor of cutting either one of them, not, 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 uh, Elizabeth Layton or the elderly. And I'm okay at thirty-seven, what, whatever, I don't know what that puts us, what would that?
Thirty-three, one thirty-one.
I know, but if I went to thirty-seven, that's not one and a half percent, that's about one percent of our whole budget then.
If you went to thirty-seven on the Conservation?
Yeah. That'd be a four thousand dollars, right?
The property tax increase, uh, property tax increase.
Yeah, it would be, it would be an increase of, of our total funds, yes.
Is anyone else in favor of property tax increase for this? Would you have any interest there?
Oh, I don't know.
When your department heads and elected officials come before you at budget meeting time, are you going to be in favor of a one and a half percent increase for their budgets as well? Not including the two and a half percent we're going to try to give our employees as a raise. Because I'd want to make sure that our people get the same consideration that we're giving our, our community partners here.
Well, I, I think, in my personal opinion, again, is, goes back to individually, see, I, I, I can see some of these needing that, but not all of them, and I don't think every department should get a automatic one percent, I think they should justify why they need the one percent. There may be reasons, you know, if, if fuel cost goes way up, there's going to be some departments that need more money because of that. Uh, or whatever else, I, I don't think it means they can't have it, but I don't know that, for me, I would have to see why, what's the reason?
You made a comment that you're not for cutting Layton Center and Services for the Elderly. Not proposing the cut, proposing the same thing they got last year.
I understand, yeah, I, I agree with, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying I think that they have a justification for why they wouldn't use those funds and what they would go to. We're looking at Casa, how much? I, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm in favor of it, I have no problem with it. I, I, you know.
Great, I agree, I agree a hundred percent on the elderly and so forth, my, my thing just is, uh, you can look at a bunch of those there, are in the same boat. Uh, COF could definitely use more money, but they understand the situation, and they make it work every year with what we give them. Would it be a little tough on Layton Center and so forth, sure, but. They got to understand, we can only give so much of this without getting into raising taxes and so forth and everything, and, uh. We just have to make it work, in my opinion.
I, I guess I'm saying I'd rather see the elderly get a couple of grand, and Elizabeth Layton Center get a couple of grand, and if it has to come off. if it has to come off at, uh, the Conservation District or, uh, Prairie Paws or some, some other place, I, I could, that's where I would rather go than saying everybody's just flat and that's where it goes. Obviously, we're not going flat if we're giving CASA eleven thousand dollars.
Okay, so to circle this back around, I know originally, Rick, you were okay, um, with twenty-five grand for the Conservation District, would you be okay with thirty-three thousand, one hundred and whatever dollars? Because that would be, if we keep it exactly like it is now, what is the exact amount, Janet?
Got rid of that. Um, I believe it's one, thirty-three, one thirty-one, I believe is what it is, let me add it up.
Are there three of you that could support thirty-three, one thirty-one to the Conservation District? With the other changes up or down that we've made to these numbers, and that would keep us flat, no tax increase?
Yeah, I could, I mean, I think they do a great service and I think it's, it's valuable, but this, these, these are tough decisions and they're gonna have to be made.
Well, I think Elizabeth Layton Center and Services for the Elderly need to, need to bump. If it's at the expense of the Conservation District, uh, I guess where to get it.
So you would be okay with thirty-three, one thirty-one as well?
Yeah, well, the others get the bump.
Yeah, that would have the others with the increases as was stated, so that's.
Thir- thirty-three, three, one, three.
Thirty-three, three, one, three.
Yeah, three, one, three.
And Randy, you, I think you indicated you'd be okay with that, is that still the case, or?
I, I would probably go for a small tax increase instead of the thirty-three, three, one, three, whether it's thirty-five or thirty-six or somewhere, but, um.
Assuming you don't have support for a tax increase, would you, would you, would you follow that plan?
Yes, yes, I will, yes, I will, um. I understand that.
Uh, no, I, I would rather, uh, I guess, I think we would just be funding them to keep the doors open. You know, just have enough money at some point to turn the lights on, pay rent, and, uh, really what what, what service is there, is left. Um, I wouldn't spend my money that way, so I won't spend everyone else's that way, I'd rather make the cut and, uh, uh, have a property tax decrease.
Commissioner Howard, would you go down to thirty-three, three, one, three?
Don't want to, that's for sure.
Well, I don't really want to either, I'll tell you that, but.
You don't want to go up, though.
Well, not if. I'd love to, if, if money grew on trees and we could go grab a handful or two, I'd love to, but I value what we could do for real life people.
I think I agree with Rick, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not for that, but if we're not gonna do a tax increase, I'd rather see the elderly get it and CASA and the, uh, Elizabeth Layton Center than fund the Conservation District.
I definitely don't want to see the tax increase, sorry, now.
It's like you've got four votes.
At thirty-three, three, one, three?
So Janet, if I go right, then fifty-nine thousand, the next one is forty-seven, seventy-six.
For Prairie Paws.
Ninety-five thousand for.
COF.
Sixty-four, three seventy-five.
For FCDC.
All right, and I skipped the Conservation District, which was thirty-three, three, one, three.
Yes, Conservation.
Aight.
Ag Society at ten thousand.
Right.
ELC at one seventy-five. Services for the elderly at two oh one. And CASA at fifteen.
That's what I have.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments on that?
And what is the total amount, could you total that up so that?
I believe that is exactly what last year's was. I will add it up one more time, just so we all are sure. That is levy taxes of six hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. The only thing different from these totals for these organizations is the fifteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars that was leveraged out of transient guest tax for these organizations. So that is keeping levy taxes for these partners, exactly what we levied taxes for them last year. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, you.
To accept these?
And say, you said under discussion to finalize it, is you want a motion then to?
We, we've just.
Okay.
If, if Derek thinks that's appropriate.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, we can do it one of two ways, we can make a motion to approve the individual amounts, um, as was stated for each, or we could make a motion to approve, you know, six hundred and ninety-three, whatever thought, odd thousand dollars in community funding, um, and then, um, or we can, in theory, you don't have to make a motion today.
You don't have to, no?
Um, we can wait until we get to budget time, work our entire budget, make sure these numbers work, and then at that point, we would finalize these as part of the entire budget process.
Which do you prefer?
I don't think any of these, I don't think any of these partners need something firm and in writing, uh, my, al- although I do think that they want a number to move forward on their budget, but a couple of these have relied on some transient guest tax funds, which you haven't discussed, so I think those two budgets definitely wouldn't be able to be finalized with the partner until we discuss transient guest tax funds.
And I think the only thing I would consider there is, you know, we're talking about nineteen funds, and when will we finalize our nineteen budget? I mean, it's, when did we do it?
We won't, um, we won't make the budget official until the first week of August. Although I will tell you that we are having our audit starting next week, so we would have some more firm numbers on where we came in from the previous year after that, so.
Or we're gonna lock you into something by making a motion and setting it?
I, and I would please give me your opinions, um, please, um, and if we hear from the community partners, we can certainly change course, but, and Janet, you're my finance officer, but I don't see a need to lock in today until we, her and I and Joy get a better wrap around the total nineteen budget and, and what that tax lid's gonna look like. And then, I do, I, I really hope you all stay firm on this, because I do think our community partners deserve a firm commitment, but we also have to make sure that the numbers literally work. And by refraining from a motion, we would have that flexibility if need be. If nothing else, Janet and I would come back in front of you here in several months and say, we're gonna have to look at these again, and here's why, we would have an articulable reason, I do not anticipate that. I don't anticipate that at all, but it would give that flex, it would give us that flexibility.
That's like double indemnity, isn't it? Have to go through the punishment twice.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that and seeing how the big picture would actually come out.
I would defer to Janet, what are you?
I, I agree. I, I don't think that we have to sign off on anything really for these, um, in the short term. Um, in the past, I've signed off on a, a guarantee of funds for the Conservation District, but I've done that at a later time. Um, she had me do it early last year, just because we had finalized them early last year, but I don't believe she needs that until June or July, so I think we have some time here.
One concern I have is these partners might continue to come in and, uh, plead their case for further funding or more funding, just keep coming at, at us.
I'd say that, that they could definitely watch this video back and see that you guys have discussed this at length. And tentatively, this is the, the consensus that you guys have came to with really no intent of, of changing overall. And just waiting on finalization of our budget a- as we look at valuations when they come in, actual audit numbers from the previous year, which does make a difference when we talk about cash carryover. So all these things impact where, where we are financially right now and where we're going in, in the coming year, so. You could, I, I guess if you really want to more solidify it, make a motion to approve these numbers pending approval of the overall budget. If you feel you need to, to do something more concrete for these partners.
Looking for like a letter of intent, more or less, a motion of intention?
If you wanted to do that, you don't have.
You don't have to.
Roy, you want to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion to, uh, exactly what you said, Janet.
Well, I think the motion is that we are directing our finance and administrator to work a budget using the numbers that we just ran off. As the working document to come from, and that, uh, we would expect you to be able to work out a budget using those numbers, I guess.
Pending, pending approval of the.
Overall budget.
Overall county budget.
Right.
To synthesize that, if one of you said, I make a motion to approve community partners' funding as was discussed today, pending final approval of the twenty-nineteen budget, that's all you would need to say, and we got it.
Well, that's what I just said.
That's Roy, Roy made that motion.
Okay, do we, do we have a second?
Derek repeated it back.
That's what I heard, Roy.
A second from anyone?
To, uh, approve the twenty-nineteen partners' budget pending finalization of the county budget.
Okay.
Good, second?
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, Janet?
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire? Chair Renault?
Yes. Okay. Staff reports.
Yeah, I, uh, I want to talk about the budget a little bit, and I know you guys are taxed and, and you've, you know, we put a lot of thought into this meeting, but several times I have mentioned what we're trying to do for our employees and in terms of keeping them on a pay plan, and I want to just elaborate, not only for you, but for the listening public on why that is important, um. The cost of turnover is, is huge, you know, it's hard to measure, but it's absolutely huge. And if we don't do something, I mean, we've seen in my short amount of time, three and a half years here, we do lose people because of money and because of benefits. We've done a good job with the raises, but our health insurance is just, it's killing us. Um, and so every year we lose employees who go up the road, but by continuing to give them this two percent, two and a half percent increase, it's allowing us to keep them, and it's keeping us, I mean, the, the loss of service alone has a tangible value. Training a different road grader operator, training dispatchers, training deputies, I mean, it's, and so it's, it's really, you're, it's the long play, you're thinking about long-term tax savings. Uh, you know, it's easy to look at a raise now and say, well, they're spending money, well, you're spending it now in hopes that you're not spending as much later, and I am extremely confident that that math would work in our favor. Take care of our people now, cut down on turnover, and we will be repaid for that later, and so, um, I, I just wanted to clear that up, and then, of course, and, and we've talked about this, our capital needs, I mean, we, uh, you know, we've got a jail that is gonna need some work, we've got a historic courthouse that is an absolutely treasured gorgeous building that needs a lot of work, and we don't have a fund for that. And, and we don't, on a yearly basis, I mean, we don't tax to pay for that stuff. So we've got to find efficiency somewhere in order to come up with that, or else, I mean, we're just, they're gonna deteriorate and we won't. And so, just know that that's what Janet and I are facing, and, and when I tell you that we expect our department heads to stay flat, I, I mean that, I mean, last year, ninety percent of the requests that my department heads made were cut before it even made it to you guys. I can't do that same thing with elected officials because they don't report to me. But know, like on our end, we are, I mean, we're putting our money where our mouth is, like, we are keeping our people as flat as we possibly can, and so, I just, I want you to know, the work is definitely going in on our end. It's going in on our department head's end, because they all have a firm belief, you know, here's how this could improve my department, and they're absolutely right, but just tough decisions have to be made. From the, you know, the highest in the organization, the board, um, to the staff level, that's just, that's where we're at right now. And so that, that's all I wanted to say, but, um, yeah.
Janet? Uh, Commissioner reports?
I've not attended anything since last weekend.
I attended Richmond City Council last night, um, it was a very long meeting with a very small agenda, but a lot of items was discussed in length, um. They're considering consolidating with the other cities for a code enforcement and having a central court where all the cities will use that court, they talked about that last night, and, uh, they talked about putting a cap on their credit card. And then they also discussed some items that they're having, or some issues they're having with their rec department. And they chose to try to get the rec department to come and meet with them and just see where the money's going that they're giving the rec department and what the plans are for this summer with that money. And that was pretty much it.
I attended the Chamber of Commerce, uh, board meeting yesterday. They talked about May nineteenth, it'll be the flea junk and trunk, uh, downtown again, and, uh, they anticipate another big event down there, and it brings a lot of people in that want to come in and uh, sell things and buy things and do things. Uh, they also talked about, uh, that next legislative coffee will be this Saturday at City Hall, uh, from, uh, starting at ten o'clock and usually lasts about an hour, um, and that pretty much is it.
Okay, uh, last night I attended the Lane City Council meeting. Uh, I, I think those, all those small, small communities are getting together about, uh, coming up with a court system and law enforcement and some of the other things. Uh, Lane did, uh, have a report from Aaron Lowry on the, uh, pathways grant. And also, uh, presentation from QuiCom on, uh, internet service, and they actually did approve QuiCom putting this tower, antennas on their tower and so forth, so they could get that started. Um, other than that, just their normal business with water leaks and wild dogs and that type of stuff, so. There's nothing else then, uh, do you need an executive session then, Derek?
I do, um, for the reasons stated, and, and fifteen minutes would do it.
Fifteen minutes?
And that would include myself and the board.
Okay, and could we start maybe at four twen- uh, twenty-five, maybe take a, take a short break that day?
Before, before we break, I'd just like to, uh, mention the untimely death of Philip Dudley, our Frank McCarney appraiser, his funeral was this morning. Um, Phil Dudley is one of the best appraisers in the, in the state of Kansas, and he's won lots of several awards for the job he's done, it's a really tough job to be a, a appraiser. And he was an outstanding appraiser, and, and we certainly appreciate the service he gave to the county and send condolences to his family and, and, uh, we will be looking for, uh, fill in that position here shortly.
Okay, uh, yeah, we have a card here also from the Fuller family for, uh, when, when, uh, Harold died, and so, uh, thanks for making those comments, Roy. So someone want to make a motion then? So someone want to make a motion then?
Make a motion to go on an executive session to just discuss, was it client or employee? Let me see the motion. Okay. Make a motion to go on an executive session to discuss an individual employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception, KSAs, seventy-five dash four three one nine, parentheses B, parentheses one.
For how long?
Fifteen minutes.
Starting at four twenty-five?
To include?
And to include the administrator and the board, yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we'll go into executive session in four minutes.